I would like to start by saying we're out of executive session. We're reconvening into Finance, and I will make a motion to adjourn Finance Committee.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Finance is adjourned. Okay, at this time, I'd like to call the September 13th, 2021 council meeting to order. If you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Coin.
Here.
Hazel Time.
Present.
Heffinger.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Reading of the minutes?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of August 23rd, 2021 is prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved.
Second. Discussion on the minutes. Will the clerk please call the roll and the approval of the minutes?
Hazel Time?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Reports of standing committees. The Finance Committee met prior to council this evening and will meet again in two weeks. Health, Safety and Sanitation, Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to let the mayor speak to the couple of events that we attended this weekend regarding the nine month one anniversary. But I'd like to introduce everybody to Joe Toth. I think I went around and introduced everybody to him. He's the new LST Director. Took over for Mark Phillips retired. There were several candidates that reply or applied to the Cleveland Clinic for this position. Joe was chosen, and I'm glad that he was. He's a great guy. He worked 12 years part-time for a life support team. His full-time position for the last 30 years was with Parma Hospital. And Joe, again, your title there was?
The manager of the EMS Institute.
Manager of the EMS Institute. I've got such a short memory. He just told me two minutes ago. But Joe ran a paramedic program up there, and he was in charge of, I believe, seven or eight different EMS departments up in Cuyahoga County. And the paramedic program that Joe started up there and was in charge of is nationally and state accredited and one of the top paramedic programs, teaching programs in the state of Ohio. Joe's been, he lives in the city of Medina. Raised his family in the city of Medina. He was very involved with the school system, Medina City Schools, with the band, the high school band when his children were, all three of them, I believe, were in the band. So it was nine or 10 years. His wife is an employee at Medina City Schools. He's very involved in his church. He was involved when his kids were little with the Boy Scouts. Just an all-around good guy. I enjoyed working with Joe. He taught me a lot when I worked with him on a part-time basis. You know, when he worked a 24-hour shift with me, we had, in the station that we were at at that time, we had, you know, four recliners. So after dinner and when we were allowed to just have our own time, Joe and I would keep everybody else awake because five minutes after we were in the recliners, we were snoring. So Joe and I both could keep everybody awake with our snoring. But Joe's a good guy. He's be willing to work with any of you, and I think he's going to do a fantastic job with the life support team. So welcome, Joe. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, welcome. Public Properties, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, no report this evening.
Special Legislation, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Three things, I think. One is, Law Director and I have been working on kind of revised proposal on demolition in the historic district, and I think it'll be just a week or two away before we can get that out to everybody in council and the members of the Special Legislation Committee to review so that we can go back to looking at what I think is an important piece of legislation to protect historic structures in the historic district. Secondly, as we discussed earlier in the Finance Committee meeting, we will return to the wild animal portion, feeding wild animal portion of the request that we had earlier this year now that we have dealt with, I think dealt with effectively with the, by separating out the cat issue from the wild animal. And lastly, that we, the issue about TNR, funding a TNR program that is put together in a partnership with the SPCA, with Mission Possible, and with the Medina Meow Mix, Meow Fix, rather, Meow Mix. Medina Meow Fix Program to operate the TNR program successfully went through Finance Committee tonight, and had a good discussion about that, and will go to City Council, I expect, in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks, Mr. Heffinger?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no meeting scheduled and no report at this time.
Water and Utilities, Mrs. Hazel Time?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no meeting scheduled at this time and nothing new to report.
Emerging Technologies, Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a meeting on August 30th where we discussed a possible partnership with Lit Communities, and they're trenching with the, laying the fiber loop. Their business plan was a little lacking. We want some more information, so we tabled that for the time being. We reviewed the Charter Review Committee recommendations as far as putting together a Emerging Technologies Advisory Committee. We've augmented the titles that they suggested. It was agreed to, and right now, Mr. Huber is looking at the legislation, and we'll be bringing that to council, or Finance, and then council in the next meeting or two. And we also reviewed the software to help Kathy manage the meetings. We had one good candidate, but there are a few things that we have to do by way of our charter, so we're looking at other options to fulfill that need. A couple of new things, we're going to be, I'll be setting up a meeting soon to review the cybersecurity policy that was required by the Audit Committee from the State Treasurer's Office. We do have an insurance policy to cover it, but we also need a written security policy, so we'll be putting that together soon. And lastly, we reviewed the new budget software at the last budget meeting. We gave Keith some recommendations to take to SSI. Hopefully, we'll be able to see some results here in the next meeting or two. Thank you.
Thank you. Request for council action, we have several for the Finance Committee. We have 21-164 Budget Amendments, 21-165 Fund Transfer Requests for the Mooney Court, 21-166 Fund Transfer Requests for Tiff Fund, 21-167 Fund Advance Requests for CDBG Chip Grants, 21-168 Fund Advance Requests for Tiff District, 21-169 Expenditure of $15,000 for Davis Tree Farm for the Forestry, 21-170 RFPs for Drug Screen and Related Professional Services, 21-171 Amendment Sales and Benefits Code Water Department Changes, 21-172 MCRC Job Description Revision Recreation Supervisor, 21-173 Expenditure of $15,000 for DNR Commercial Flooring MCRC, 21-174 Reject Proposal for MCRC Sponsorships, 21-175 Fiscal Year 21 CDBG Grant Amendment Ordinance, Amendment Ordinance 9221, 21-176 Then and Now for Emergency Railroad Repair, 21-177 Loan Application for OPWC North Huntington Street Reconstruction Phase III, 21-178 Purchase of Two Dump Truck Beds for F-550 Street Department, 21-179 Amendment Sales and Benefits Code Section 3109.1 Regarding Overtime for Fire, 21-180 American Rescue Plan Act Grant Potential Projects Discussion. Reports of Municipal Officers, Mayor Hamel?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the farmers markets continue each Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00. As Councilman Simpson alluded to, on Saturday, September 11th, there was a memorial event for the 20th anniversary of the 9/11 memorial down next to Fire Station 1. It was very well attended, both by the public and public officials. Councilman Simpson, Councilman Rose, Councilwoman Hazel Time, Keith and I all attended, and the Rotary did a great job in putting it together. The next day, September 12th, was the Tunnel to the Towers Race. It went very well. I know Keith and his family participated, and Denny was there for the kickoff. And it was amazing to me to see the crowd actually standing in the gazebo, from the gazebo to Broadway, and all of Broadway was shoulder to shoulder, the entire street and that half of the square. And I know Mark Phillips said it was the largest number of racers they've ever had turnout in the city of Medina. They hoped to raise 25 to 30,000 and ended up, they believe, in excess of 90,000 this year alone. So that's a great testament to our community, and we appreciate them hosting that race here. I wanted to mention that City of Medina is proud and honored to have resident and community leader, Michelle Powell. She was recently recognized as a hidden philanthropist in the Celebrate Those Who Give Black exhibit in Cleveland. This award was given by the soul of philanthropy in Cleveland, Ohio, and the exhibit will be on display at the Cleveland Public Library. Michelle was recognized for ongoing efforts with the local Let's Make a Difference program in Medina for the past 20 years, and I just want to congratulate Michelle Powell for making Medina proud. And then last but not least, an upcoming event, September 28th, 29th, and 30th, local churches are having a three-day unity revival. Each of those evenings, 28th, 29th, and 30th, it's at 7:00 PM at Cornerstone Chapel, 3939 Granger Road. There's a community choir made up of the various churches, and there'll be different speakers each night. Pastor Luke from United Church of Christ Congregational, Pastor Ruffin from Second Baptist, and Pastor from Cornerstone on the three nights, and it's open to the public to attend and hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Durham, Director of Finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just an update on the bond issue. I'm sure you're aware, but people watching at home may not be. Council authorized a bond issue to refinance some outstanding bonds and to do some additional debt in our 108 fund to cover street repairs and so on. Those bonds should be going to market next week.
Good. Mr. Huber, Law Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Chief Kenny, Police Department?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have some personnel additions in the Police Department. I'd like to introduce Tyler Howe, Lauren Brooks, and Ian Baker as our new police officers. They replaced two resignations, I'm sorry, replaced one resignation and two retirements. Tyler's currently enrolled in the Police Academy, so he'll come out in about four months and begin his field training time, which is a 12-week period. Lauren and Ian are both currently in field training. They actually started on this past Sunday, so they'll complete their 12 weeks of field training and then be out on their own. So please join me in welcoming them if you happen to come across them. I'd also like to congratulate and welcome Joe Toth as the new LST Director, and we look forward to working with him.
Thank you. Chief Walters, Fire Department?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Mr. Pacoli, Service Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report, and also would like to welcome Mr. Toth.
Mr. Gladys, Building Official?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Mr. Worley, Parks and Recreation Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of updates for the public. As of Labor Day, our splash pads and outdoor pool were closed. We had a great season, and hopefully be able to provide an update on the outdoor pool at our next meeting. I did want to notify the public that we recently replaced the athletic lighting at Ray Miller Park Basketball Court, and starting this Wednesday from 7:00 to 9:00, in collaboration with the Rec Center, we're going to have the lights on all throughout fall for organized, semi-organized pickup basketball for anybody in the community. Additionally, I'd also like to remind the community to like our Recreation Center Facebook page, or check out medinarec.org for new programs and offerings. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, City Engineer?
Thank you. Just want to advise on two projects that will be starting here in the next couple of weeks. Our East Liberty City Hall Parking Deck Detention Basin will get started, I believe, a week from today. We'll confirm that and then issue advisories to everybody because that will affect parking in the lot there next to Sully's. And also, our East Reagan Parkway Multipurpose Path Lighting Project is scheduled to start next week as well.
Thank you. Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of items to note for council and the public this evening. At the last City Medina Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, the group worked on a community survey. The survey has been finalized and launched, and we are encouraging all members of council, employees, and the public to go to the project website and complete the survey online. The website is www.madinacompplan2021.wordpress.com to provide their feedback. Also, if they don't want to do that on the computer, they can visit and share their insights with the project team in person. We will be directly engaging with the community on the following dates and events. The first one will be this Saturday, September 18th, at the Medina Square Farmers Market from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. We will be in the Main Street tent. And then the next one will be held on Tuesday, September 21st, at Cool Beans Cafe. So the project office hours will be from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Arthur Schmidt from our OHM Advisors will be there engaging the public. And him and myself will both be at the farmers market this Saturday. And then the last event will be held Thursday, September 30th, which will be a virtual community meeting at 6:00 PM in the evening. We're still working out the details and the login information, and we'll be coordinating with Jared from Medina TV on how we're going to get all that set up, so there'll be more details on that coming out soon. We also, I don't know if you've noticed or not, but in the front lobby of City Hall here, we put up three different boards for the community to provide feedback. There's sticky notes and little dots, so there's little activities. We also have a duplicate set of those boards, and I was just talking to Mr. Worley this evening. We're going to set those boards, the same set, at the Rec Center for the community to give feedback as well. So we will be setting out, sending out a press release here about the survey and all of the events. We have the events set up on social media, so if you see those, you can share those on your own pages. And if there's anybody interested in volunteering this Saturday to help distribute flyers, we have these flyers set up with the QR code, so for those people that are tech savvy and would like to scan the QR code, it takes you directly to the website, and they can fill out the survey online. Also, I just wanted to mention that I did take the opportunity to do the walk for the Tunnel to Towers this weekend, and I was very impressed with, the police chief had all of the roads blocked, so it was very, very safe for all the walkers and the runners. And I also wanted to thank Chief Walters for cheering everybody on at the Fire Station 1 as we were coming through. So one thing I thought was interesting is when I registered the day before, they actually gave you the picture and a story of a firefighter that, or a person that had, first responder that had lost their lives, so you got a little bit more insight into that person and the reason why you were participating. So it was a very well-organized event, and as Councilman Denny Simpson always says about being kind, I think everybody was in that mode that day, and it was much appreciated. So, thank you.
Thank you. Notices, Communications, and Petitions. We have one liquor permit, not to object to the issuance of a new D3 permit to Grab and Go Firewood LLC doing businesses as Grab and Go Beverage and Market, 236B North State Road and Patio.
Move not to object?
Second, not to object.
Discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hazel Time?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Unfinished business, we have none. Introduction of Visitors. Members of the public who have admitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. Members, all comments should be directed to the Chair, and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there's a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the rear microphone and say their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public who have afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the Chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Okay, introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. At this time, I entertain a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings on the following ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 13621, ordinance 13721, ordinance 13821, ordinance 13921, ordinance 14021, ordinance number 14121, ordinance 14221, ordinance 14321, ordinance 14421, ordinance 14521, resolution 14621, ordinance 14721, ordinance 14821, ordinance 14921, ordinance 15021, ordinance 15121, ordinance 15221, resolution 15321, and ordinance 15421.
I will make a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings of tonight's ordinances and resolutions.
Second. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hazel Time?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Ordinance 13621, ordinance adopting the uniform compliance policies for the city of Medina.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Is this Mayor Hamel? Oh, Keith, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is something that ODOT and then the FAA decided they wanted to see for the federal grants that we receive. Doesn't really change much in terms of our, what we do, because most of these policies were already covered by things that we had in other places, but they want them in one place in this uniform grants compliance.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hazel Time?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Ordinance 136-21 passes seven to zero.
Ordinance 13721, ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with OHM Advisors for planning and zoning services.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Mayor Hamel?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is services provided for our planning and zoning, staff reports, and just helping us through the processes until we get our Community Development Director hired and in place. I respectfully ask council to make it retroactive to July 26th. That's when the Board of Control approved it, and they then started to work shortly thereafter as council was on break, and we won't need the emergency clause if we just make it retroactive, which it states in the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hazel Time?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Ordinance 137-21 passes seven to zero.
Ordinance 13821, ordinance authorizing the payment of absolute construction services for the private home rehabilitation at 1995 Hathaway Drive, Brunswick, Ohio, as part of the fiscal year 18 chip grant program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I move to add at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance, Mrs. Marshall?
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance authorizes a payment to absolute construction for the private home rehabilitation at 1995 Hathaway Drive in Brunswick, Ohio, as part of the PY18 chip grant program and declaring an emergency. The payment is in the amount of $55,052, and the emergency clause is requested to get the contractor paid, but also, this is the final contract for the program year 18 chip grant. That grant must be concluded by September 30th of 2021 and closed out by October 31st of 2021.
Thank you.
I had a question on this.
Mr. Huber?
Last week, I was advised that absolute, on some of these projects, did not complete building department review. Has that been completed? On the Grant Street and the? You have one inspection left on Grant Street? So these monies are not supposed to be paid unless these, these projects pass the building department approval, correct?
The final inspection, yes.
Okay, so I guess that should probably be a condition on the Grant Street one then. Okay.
And I guess what I hear is it qualifies for the Hathaway Drive one. It's fully approved?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on the emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hazel Time?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Coin?
Yes.
Hazel Time?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Ordinance 13821 passes seven to zero.
On ordinance 13921, do we want to table this ordinance, I guess, based upon the fact that the final inspection has not been granted yet?
Mr. Coin?
Yes, Mayor?
We're okay passing this. We just won't issue them the check until Dan tells us it's been inspected.
Okay. I just want to make sure that that protocol is followed. Okay, thank you.
That works, yeah?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ordinance 13921, ordinance authorizing the payment of absolute construction services for private home rehabilitation at 248 Grant Street as part of the fiscal year 20 chip grant program.
Move to approve, subject to final building inspector approval.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I move to add at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance as qualified by the law direct, or subject to the final approval of the building department. Mrs. Marshall?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So this is another request to, for a purchase order for absolute construction for a private rehab project at 248 Grant Street. This is through the PY20 chip grant program. Contract including scope of work was attached, and the total contract amount is $48,270. The PO was set up for $50,000, just to make sure that there were not any unforeseen change orders. And the emergency clause was, is because there's not a long list of contractors wanting to participate in this program due to the lengthy process for payment, but this one is subject to the building official signing off on those final inspections.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment on the emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Will clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance as subject to the building official's approval of final plans, or final inspections.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Ordinance 139-21 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 140-21, ordinance amending ordinance number 5615, passed April 27, 2015, and authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the wellness services agreement between the Medina Community Recreation Center and Medina Hospital at Cleveland Clinic Hospital for a wellness partnership.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Worley?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is to amend the agreement with the Cleveland Clinic Medina Hospital relative to the fees they pay for our wellness plans. The, there was a change in the amounts for 2022. It's going to be 15,000. 2023 will be 20,000, and 2024 will be 20,000. And the reason for the reduction in 2022 is because of the reduced traffic flow and some of the struggles we're having with programming. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment on the ordinance? Will clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordinance 140-21 passes seven zero.
Discussion? Mr. Pecoli?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you look at the agreement that is being proposed, the city entered initially in the August of 2010. It was renewed in 2017, and then again ending here in 2021. So it's been almost 12 years with respect to entering into the aggregation program here. We talked about it, finance, it's not a huge savings, but you'd be surprised the amount of folks and calls we get, even that little bit, that $5 to $7 a month that the folks are saving. They're calling wanting to know if we have an aggregation program. The city does benefit from a grant. We received 306,000 the first round, and then almost 75,000, I believe, in this last three years. And they're proposing, I believe, between 25 and 30,000 in the ensuing years going to 2024 in each year.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? This is a notification. I have to abstain on this because my employer represents Ohio Edison or First Energy or all the different entities that they comprise. Will clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Abstain.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance 141-21 passes 60A's one of 100.
Ordinance 142-21, ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for an auction, sale, and disposal of city equipment and vehicles no longer in use.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Pecoli?
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is our annual auction. We have tentatively upon approval of this ordinance slated Saturday, October 16th, as the date of the auction at the City Garage, 781 West Smith Road here in Medina. The preview will be at nine, as always, and the auction begins at 10:00 AM.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Ordinance 142-21 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 143-21, ordinance authorizing the purchase of three fleet vehicles for Montrose Ford to be used by the service and engineering departments.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Pecoli?
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is, this request is for three fleet vehicles, two in service, replacing a 2004 pickup truck, a 2007, and then engineering has a 1997 pickup truck that has been long overdue. So we talk about the chip shortage. We may see these vehicles upon approval here in May of 2022, they're telling us. Not sure what the future holds, and the best we can do is try to pursue the replacement of these vehicles at this point in time.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordinance 143-21 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 144-21, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the Medina County Commissioners and the City of Medina for backup building official services.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Gladish? Is that you, Mayor? Mr. Gladish?
Sure. I was contacted by the county. They did not have a backup as, as required when you have a building department. So they asked if the city would be willing to join with them. I would remind the council, we already have a similar agreement with Brunswick, but, but we told the county that, that we were fine. It just gives us a backup to our backup in essence. And we're trying to do more and more collaborating with the county, and this fits right into that.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordinance 144-21, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a consent and access agreement
for the properties located at 123 West Liberty Street pertaining to the Ohio EPA targeted brownfield assessment grant.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and ordinance, Mrs. Marshall?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Medina City Development Corporation is applying for an Ohio EPA targeted brownfield assessment grant. And this request is to authorize the mayor to sign what is referred to as the consent to access form to allow the Ohio EPA contractor to be determined to perform environmental assessments on those parcels. No funding is needed as the grant covers all of the costs. We are respectfully requesting the emergency clause so that we can submit the application as soon, as soon as possible as this is about a three to four month turnaround time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance and order of the emergency clause? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Ordinance 145-21 passes seven zero.
Resolution 146-21, a resolution authorizing the mayor to file an application for grant funding from the Ohio Department of Development for funds to assist in the construction cause for the South Court Water Tower Rehabilitation Project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the resolution and the emergency clause. Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. President. This grant program was announced by the governor this summer, I believe this past July. We reviewed several potential projects, tried to find out the one that we thought would be the best fit pertaining to the guidelines for the grant. We came up with our South Court Rehabilitation Project, which is a recoding of the exterior of the water tower, as well as some safety improvements and some other minor upgrades. We are asking for the emergency clause because these grants are viewed as submitted, so the sooner you get them in, the sooner you get reviewed and have a chance to be awarded.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the resolution and order of the emergency clause? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
to twelve C Technologies LTD.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Who's this going to?
Looks like, Mr. Coyne, there was a typo in the original ordinance, as far as which account number to take it over, and this just corrects that.
Okay. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please... Oh, Mr. Patton?
I think the company name is I two C, not twelve.
Oh, it's supposed to be an I instead of a one? Okay, that typo will be corrected.
Another typo.
Any further comments or discussions on this one? This seems like a good one. Will clerk please call the rolling adoption of the ordinance?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance one forty-seven twenty-one passes seven zero.
Ordinance one forty-eight twenty-one, ordinance amending section one of ordinance number twenty-nine twenty-one, passed February twenty-second, twenty-one, relative to the payment for the design build contract with CPS Construction Inc. for design and construction of a city hall parking structure.
Move to approve.
Second.
This one's back, Mr. Patton?
Actually, I don't know about this one.
Mr. here, Durham?
This is another... It's another correction to an ordinance that just...
Oh, this is a correction to a previous ordinance that was passed and needs to be modified, but not necessarily by the letters or numbers?
I didn't follow that.
Okay. Okay, well, I'm not... Let me go... Let me pull it up here. Hold your phone. Let me see if I can find it here.
Page ninety in the packet.
Eighty-nine ninety, here we are.
It came from the finance department.
It looks like this is a correction of an account number going from a different account about sufficient funds. Money was being made out of these two accounts, and there was funds available to make these payments. Is that correct?
That is correct. It came from the finance department.
Yeah, it's the account number.
Okay. Account number correction. Any further discussion on this ordinance? Will the clerk please call the rolling adoption of the ordinance?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance one forty-eight twenty-one passes seven zero.
Ordinance one forty-nine twenty-one, ordinance amending ordinance number two seventeen twenty, passed December fourteen, two thousand and twenty. Amendments to the two thousand and twenty-one budget reinstate to ten percent department reductions from the two thousand and twenty due to COVID-nineteen.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
This came from our budget process that we had in two thousand and nineteen, going through the our budgets, or two thousand and twenty, I'm sorry. We were concerned that the COVID shutdown that occurred throughout the United States may have a negative impact on the income tax collections and the money generation for the City of Medina, so the council and administration found it prudent to reduce all departmental budgets by ten percent, whether through the budgetary process of the two thousand and twenty year or a carryforward number that the department was carrying. So there was a reduction pretty much ten percent throughout the entire city. Since that time, the income tax collections have proven to be somewhat steady throughout the year, and we wish to reinstate the ten percent reduction back to each of the department heads, and we hope that they will be frugal with that money going forward, because these monies, though they were reduced, it's about a two-point-six million dollar reinstatement of cash through the individual budgets and the carryforward amounts, which should be helpful to each of the departments. Now, I know the departments have been working to make sure that the monies that they were reduced in operations of their budget time has been on a slim, so hopefully this will help them reinstate some of the projects that were deferred and some of the individual, I guess, mandates that have occurred throughout the year to be reinstated through them and paid through this ten percent reinstatement. Now, this doesn't mean you guys have to spend it. You could save it. Just remember that. Any questions?
Will the clerk please call the rolling adoption of the ordinance?
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Ordinance one forty-nine twenty-one passes seven zero.
Ordinance one fifty twenty-one, ordinance amending ordinance number two seventeen twenty, passed December fourteen, two thousand and twenty. Amendments to the two thousand and twenty-one budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. These are amendments to the appropriations. We talked about them in the earlier finance meeting, their transfers and advances, and then the chip grants.
Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the rolling adoption of the ordinance?
Hazelton?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Ordinance one fifty-one twenty-one passes seven zero.
Ordinance one fifty-one twenty-one, ordinance authorizing the finance director to make certain fund transfers.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. We're repaying the Court Special Projects Fund for money that they put towards the case management system.
Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will clerk please call the rolling adoption of the ordinance?
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Ordinance one fifty-one twenty-one passes seven zero.
Ordinance one fifty-two twenty-one, ordinance authorizing the finance director to make certain fund advances.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. We are advancing money. The first two are advancing money for the annual grants, and that's just an annual thing that we do, and then once the grants are done, we're reimbursed and we repay the advance. The final one is the TIF, which is a little bit more unusual, but we're doing that as an advance, so that as the money comes in from the TIF funds, we can repay the advance to general.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will clerk please call the rolling adoption of the ordinance?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Ordinance one fifty-two twenty-one passes seven zero.
Resolution one fifty-three twenty-one, a resolution amending resolution number ninety-two twenty-one, passed June fourteen, two thousand and twenty-one, section one, relative to the small cities fiscal year twenty-one community development black grant, CDBG program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it this time.
My second includes emergency clause.
Discussion on emergency clause and the resolution, Mrs. Marshall?
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this month, September second, the Ohio Department of Development notified the city that grantees that received an allocation grant of one hundred and fifty thousand can only apply for up to three projects. This is not including administration and fair housing. The city had originally applied for four projects to include code enforcement, mowing machines, gym equipment, and public transit. As a result, the city must eliminate one of those projects, and additionally, the state determined that the purchase of seventy thousand dollars of new gym equipment for the rec center did not qualify for the CDBG funding. So the city must reallocate the seventy thousand dollars into the approved categories. In conversations with the mayor, it was suggested that the grant pick up a portion of the general fund allocation to public transit over a two-year period, and by picking up seventy-five percent of the city's portion, that would increase the amount for that activity to seventy-three thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Originally, it was only thirty thou... Or, I'm sorry, originally, it was only twenty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty. The other suggestion is to increase the funding for code enforcement to partially cover the new full-time code enforcement inspector, plus code enforcement work done by the chief building official and building inspector, property maintenance inspector over a two-year period. So the amount for this activity would increase to forty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Originally, it was at thirty thousand. The emergency clause is requested because we have to submit a revised budget to the State of Ohio Department of Development by September fifteenth, and so that's like in two days. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the resolution and/or the emergency clause? Will the clerk please call the rolling adoption of the emergency clause?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion passed the seven zero.
Will clerk please call the rolling adoption of the resolution?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Resolution one fifty-three twenty-one passes seven zero.
Ordinance one fifty-four twenty-one, and ordinance of the council of the city of Medina Ohio certifying that when municipal obligation was incurred, sums were lawfully appropriated to funds to satisfy the obligation, and sufficient funds currently exist to satisfy this obligation.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it this time.
My second includes emergency clause.
Discussion on emergency clause and the ordinance, Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is for an emergency repair on the railroad. The emergency clause is requested because the repair has already been done, and we need to pay the vendor.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the rolling adoption of the emergency clause?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Motion passed the seven zero.
Will the clerk please call the rolling adoption of the ordinance?
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Ordinance one fifty-four twenty-one passes seven zero.
Council comments? Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be short and sweet, because it's been a long meeting. First of all, again, Joe, welcome. You're going to be a breath of fresh air in that corner of the hospital. Second, I would like to mention that when we were celebrating the twentieth anniversary, or not celebrating, remembering the twenty-year anniversary of nine eleven, it brought back a lot of memories for all of us that were old enough to remember it. I'm just amazed that, you know, people that are twenty years or younger, you know, it's foreign to them. But during the celebration, it was amazing to see all the, in our little community, all the different people that came together, and we were united. And I listened to President Biden, former President George W. Bush speak at two different ceremonies. The one that impressed me was President George W. Bush. He talked about unity in our country and how it's lax now, and I'm not going to cite him verbatim, but a lot of... He mentioned that, you know, the foreign terrorists are still knocking at our doors, but he also compared our domestic terrorists, the ones that have defaced some of our precious buildings in Washington, D.C., and still are promoting hatred. He said that they are in the same frame of mind as the foreign terrorists. So I just want to remind people that we can unite, you know, it doesn't have to be a tragedy like nine eleven to happen, and again, I know you're sick and tired of hearing this, but, you know, alls we have to do is, it doesn't matter what your opinion is about whatever subject, just be kind to one another and listen to what they have to say. You don't have to agree with them, but you don't have to be angry and hateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hazelton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will also try to make this short and sweet, although it's too important not to mention. While last month was overdose awareness month, this month is twofold and very meaningful to me. It is recovery month, and it is also suicide prevention and awareness month. As a person in recovery, as well as a suicide survivor, I do want people to know that there are resources out there. The best, most convenient place, I feel, to find those resources would be by visiting familyfirstmedina.org. You will find links to the atom board, you will find mental health links, you will also find resources for people that are in recovery from substance abuse. So please do not hesitate to reach out. I myself am a certified peer supporter through the state of Ohio. Again, my information is on the city website. Please do not hesitate to utilize me as a resource, as well as the other resources that I have mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, welcome, Joe. Looking forward to working with you. If Denny says you're okay, you're okay. And to the breakfast coanis, I just want to extend the compliments that I received from many members of the community on the fine ceremony honoring nine eleven. Thank you for doing that, and thank you to all the speakers. And lastly, as a bit of a divergence, just to keep the community aware, the Stop Government Waste Committee has now brought the city up to ninety... sixty-four thousand dollars in unnecessary legal fees. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Looks like Mr. Lamb, you ready?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Two things. One, I just want to say I'm grateful to the SPCA, Mission Possible, Medina Meow Fix, Councilwoman Hazelton, for six months of work to create the TNR program that we recognized and voted on in finance committee tonight. And I also want to thank the mayor and members of council for your support. And lastly, I want to mention that former police officer Ron Stoller is going to be honored for his service to the arts at the county arts... the Medina County Arts Council's Harvest for the Arts on September twenty-third at Buffalo Creek. And some of you, I'm sure some of the, some of you here now, and some of the officers here now, I'm sure, and the mayor, are very familiar with Ron, so I just wanted to mention that, that he's getting honored along with two other people by the county arts council. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind everybody, we have another budget meeting this Wednesday. They're winding down, so if you missed one, there's still time. So try to attend, and it's a lot of fun. With that, the meeting is adjourned.